Okay. Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of May 9th, 2016. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a period of silent meditation.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We'll start this afternoon with our Mayor's Award of Excellence. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, this is the Award of Excellence for March, and it's being presented to a team from the Purchasing Division of our Finance Department. Lori Irons and Deborah Winkler were nominated in the category of productivity by purchasing agent Bob Walla for their work to develop a more user-friendly contract management system for the Purchasing Division and its customers. First, a procurement advisory committee was formed, and included representatives from the city and from the county, and also from the Public Building Commission. The committee made suggestions on how to improve the system, to look up existing contracts in certain categories. They also recommended the development of a notification system to send email notices to departments and vendors prior to the expiration of contract dates. The staff researched the contract management system offered by Ionwave, which hosts currently the city-county EBIT system. Lori, Deb, and others in the office determined that the system would indeed meet their perceived needs, and would help manage all contracts for the three entities in a variety of ways. The city, the county, and the Building Commission have 630 active contracts for commodities and services. Lori and Deb accepted the challenge of entering all those contracts into the new system. They first developed a worksheet that listed each aspect of the process, and this worksheet was eventually used as a tool to show others in the office how to implement the system. To enter all the contract files, Lori and Deb worked extra hours during the week, and most Saturdays during the summer, last summer, to keep up with the normal workload and to make progress on the change to the new system. Walla wrote that it took nearly four months to enter all the contracts, but the hard work and dedication of Lori and Deb is now benefiting internal customers as well as the general public. Walla wrote, because of the extra effort shown by Deb and by Lori, "All three entities have a system that provides greater transparency, ensures that contracts do not expire unnoticed, and incorporates all of our information from the bid process to contract administration altogether into one program." So that sounds really good to me, and so it's my pleasure to present Lori and Deb, Deborah, with the Mayor's Award of Excellence for March. Please join me in congratulating them.
Do you want to say a few words about them?
I think Bob might want to say a few things, too, but just like the other award winners from the Finance Department, it's not just this project that makes them such great employees. Deb's been in the Finance Department since 1979. She was there my first day on the job. And Lori's been with us four years, and she's taken on all kinds of new responsibilities in that time, and certainly this project is a good example of that. I would like to point out that the county and the Building Commission did provide for the cost of this software as well as the city, so we've thanked them for their participation. And I know the stuff that comes across my desk to sign, I'm seeing a lot less contract documents that are two or three months into the contract. We're seeing them two or three, four weeks before, so I know the system is working, and I can only thank them for their efforts in implementing it.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
I also want to say thank you to Sharon Mulder and Shelley Henze for the work that they also put in to get the system up and running, and also to maintain it. That's the other part of this whole thing, is it's a daily job for us to maintain that system and keep it updated on a regular basis, and all of our staff has worked together as a team to make this happen, and we are very appreciative of the support that we've received from all three entities to give us the funds for it and to allow us a little bit of grace in getting everything done and put into place, so thank you. Deb and Lori are just phenomenal employees. They work really hard. You would be surprised with the number of documents that go across their desk in a year. That 620 was just the annual supply contracts. It doesn't include all the single purchases and the construction contracts and all of the other bids and documents that come through, so very appreciate their work very much, and we will continue to do the best we can and improve in all the ways we can. Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words, or recognize your family who's here with you?
Well, I'd like to thank everybody for this award, and also thank Bob for nominating, and like he said, there's other people involved in this process, too. And I have my son Drew Winkler and daughter Shannon Winkler here.
And I, too, just want to thank Bob. It's been a pleasure to be able to work under his direction, and he's really got us headed on a great path, so thank you for the nomination. And I have my husband, Lee Irons, back there, my son Riley Morton, Nathan Morton, daughter-in-law Tori Morton, and my two grandsons, Scout and Ryder.
Nice, welcome. All right, thank you for being here. Congratulations. In accordance with LB 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The Order of Business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading on the second and last meetings of the month immediately prior to adjournment. Anyone may speak on an issue not on the agenda for that date nor plan for a future agenda. If you need agendas, we have some in the back of the room. You can also follow along on your smartphone by going to lincoln NE.gov and clicking on the City Council Meeting, and if you need a parking pass, we have some in the City Council Office just next door. Will you, clerk, please call the first item?
I would also like to request those giving testimony to please clearly state your name and address and sign in on the sign-in sheet laying on the podium. First item is our consent agenda, items one through 10.
Anyone wishing to speak on an item on our consent agenda, items one through 10, or if you're being appointed to a board and commission this afternoon, please come forward. All right, seeing none, next item, please.
I guess we could call the vote on the consent items?
Let's do it.
Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Oh, we need a motion to approve in a second, please.
Introduce.
Move approval of items one through 10, or whichever items we...
Did one of us sign that?
Seconded by Roy. Discussion.
Yeah, I believe that someone said that we needed to have an amendment to add 5:30 PM to items five through eight. Do we need to vote on that? Or do we just need to note that it's been amended?
I think we need to note it's been amended.
Rick, do we need to...
It's an administrative correction, so...
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so the motion was made and seconded. Any other discussion on those items?
I want to clarify which numbers we're actually voting on, because I don't know if one through 10 all being voted on, or just some of them.
I'm calling items on the consent agenda, one through 10.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, call the roll on items one through 10, please.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fowler's?
Yes.
Motion Carry?
Zero.
All right. Item 11?
Item 11, application of JSD LLC for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 45 feet by 65 feet at Huskerville Pub and Pizza at 2805 Northwest 48th Street on May 21st, 2016, between 11 and 1.
Anyone wishing to speak to this item, please come forward. Huskerville Pizza, anyone wishing to speak on this item, please come forward.
My name's Scott Hager. I'm a co-owner of Huskerville.
Okay, and what's your address?
My personal and the business?
Either one.
2805 Northwest 48th Street.
Okay, and tell us about your application for an S D L?
It's for a poker run that benefits muscular dystrophy. So it'd be, well, about two, three hours long, really, but then we have a small band outside for afterwards entertainment. That's pretty much the basis of it.
Any questions from the council? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Anyone else wishing to speak to this item, please come forward. Okay, next item, please.
Application of Kettleman's Ball of Nebraska for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 325 feet by 325 feet at Nebraska Innovation Campus at 2021 Transformation Drive on June 3rd, 2016, between noon and midnight.
My name is Jane Green. My address is 6830 Almyra Lane, and I'm here representing Kettleman's Ball. We will have our 17th Annual Kettleman's Ball, and I'm sorry, I forgot to introduce my cohorts. Tori Leniman, who will be the host of Kettleman's Ball at her place south of Princeton, and Danae Kalkowski. Kettleman's Ball is a fundraiser for cancer research, and we are very excited to be hosting it in this part of the state. It hasn't been in this part of the state for 10 years, so... But one of the nuances, the Saturday event, which is the large event, will be at Tori's. The Friday night event, we were having at Innovation Campus because we wanted the chance to showcase that, especially to this clientele. There'll be a lot of people from outstate Nebraska who are familiar with the former state fairgrounds and would like to see what we've done at Innovation Campus, so... And due to the size of the event, we do not fit into the conference room at Innovation Campus, so we're putting up a tent outside, which may be more than you wanted to know.
Okay.
We're excited.
Questions? All right, go ahead, Carl.
Well, I did wonder. I saw 1,500 attendees was what you expected, so I didn't think we had indoor space, so that's great.
No, we don't.
Yeah. All right.
And you're all welcome to come.
Thank you very much. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak to this item, please come forward. All right, next item, please.
Item 13, application of D O and J O doing business as O'Rourke's Tavern for a special designated license to cover an indoor area measuring approximately 175 feet by 160 feet and 40 feet by 160 feet, and an outdoor area measuring approximately 100 feet by 255 feet at Frontier Harley-Davidson, 205 Northwest 40th Street on May 21st, 2016, from 1 to midnight.
I'm Doug McLeese, 2600 Jane Lane, representing O'Rourke's Tavern, and Nick Dean, representing the Boys and Girls Club, here to answer any of your questions.
All right, any questions from the council? All righty. Thank you, gentlemen. Anyone else wishing to speak to this item, please come forward. All right, move on to the next item.
Item 14, application of Blue Blood Brewing Company for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 20 feet by 40 feet at 925 Robbers Cave Road on May 19th, 2016, from 4 to 9.
Hello, everyone. My name's Toby Antson. I'm General Manager of Blue Blood Brewing Company, here to talk to y'all.
All right, tell us about your application.
We are doing, we have two, so do I need to tell you first one, second one?
Yeah, well, did you read both items?
No, I only read item 14.
Why don't you read the second item, and item 15, and we'll go from there?
Item 15, application of Blue Blood Brewing for a special designated license to cover outdoor area measuring approximately 30 feet by 50 feet at Capital Cigar Company at 333 North Cotner Boulevard on May 20th, from 4 to 10.
All right, tell us about both events.
Okay, both events. It's Lincoln Craft Beer Week that week, and so we're doing an outdoor event. The first event is with a company called Beer Paws, and it's an organic beer treats for dogs, and so we're allowing people to bring their dogs out for the night, and we just put in our new, I'm sure you all are aware, we just opened up on Wednesday, and so we're waiting for sod to show up. This is actually a backup plan for us. If our sod goes in, then the dogs and everything will be on property and won't be in our lot. This event will not take up any parking stalls, and it's just for dog owners and beer lovers to come drink a beer and enjoy the time with their dogs, so...
All right, questions?
So if you have your dogs, come down.
Okay. My dogs aren't big drinkers.
No, but if, how it works is if you buy a pint, you get a treat.
Great.
They'll do that, for sure.
So either dogs get a, yeah.
Dogs are training us.
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
The next one?
We did them both at once. Oh, do you want to talk about, yeah, talk about the other one?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't want to have to come back.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, the next one is at Capital Cigar. We're doing a cigar and beer pairing, and so we have paired up with Don over at Capital Cigar, and so there'll be basically an event where bringing a few of our beers. He's pairing them with some of his cigars, and again, it's all about craft beer, so this whole entire week will be, there'll be events all over Lincoln, and it'll be a good time, so...
All righty. No dogs. No dogs.
Well, okay.
All right.
Have fun.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks.
Anyone wishing to speak to these items, please come forward.
Mr. Chair, I'd move approval of items 11 through 15.
Second.
Seconded by Carl. Discussion on items 11 through 15. All right, call the roll, please.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fowler's?
Yes.
Motion Carry, 7-0.
All right, let's move on to public hearing resolutions. Item 16 and 17 first.
Item 16, approving an agreement between the City of Lincoln on behalf of the Lincoln Parks and Recreation Department and the Lincoln Parks Foundation to provide funding for the Woods Park Tennis Center renovation project and the associated endowment, and amending the fund, funding shown for Parks and Recreation CIP Project 409417 Woods Park Tennis Center by allocating an additional $102,000 of previously appropriated but unallocated Keno funds and changing and increasing the appropriation from $4,600,000 of capital campaign donations identified as other funds to $4,628,370,000 for Woods Park Tennis Center project.
Good afternoon. My name's Lynn Johnson. I am the Director of the Parks and Recreation Department here in Lincoln, and as Sony said, really, two items for the City Council this afternoon. One, an agreement about the funding for the Woods Park Tennis Center project, and the second, an amendment to the capital improvement program. We have a coordinated presentation this afternoon involving eight speakers, and I'll run down their names quickly. And J.J. Yost is here, and is going to talk about the project itself, the construction project. Kristy Dionisopoulos, who is the Executive Director of the Lincoln Parks Foundation, is here to talk about the foundation's role in the project. Steve Hubka is going to talk about the source of the Keno funds that are proposed to be allocated through the CIP. Kevin Heim is the Executive Director of the Woods Park Tennis Center. We'll talk about programming and how this project assists in continuation of programming. Rick Hayth is a member of the wheelchair tennis program at the Woods Park Tennis Center. Fidan Ibrahimova, and I hope that I pronounced that right, is a member of the youth tennis program at the tennis center, and then Mark Donlin is a member, or plays regularly at Woods. She has been a member, a very active member of our fundraising campaign team, and she and her husband Ken are lead donors to the project. I'm going to start off with just talking a little bit about the history of this project and the significance of it. What we have up on the screen is the adopted Woods Park master plan, and this is actually kind of a unique document, because this is the only master plan within Lincoln's park system that is reviewed and approved by the City Council. The Woods Park Tennis Center has essentially been part of the master plan of Woods Park since the 1950s. Obviously, the tennis center has evolved over time. In the 80s, there was a group that came to the city and was interested in establishing indoor tennis, and at that time, the two air structures were one and then the second, but the two air structures were put in place. That group has evolved, and several years ago, the Friends of Woods Tennis took over the operating position of the prior group and has continued to operate the facility. This is a, I think, a great example of public-private partnership. In this instance, because the Friends of Woods Tennis operates the facility, the city has no direct operating expenses on an annual basis. The other thing that's significant about it is that we have people who are absolutely passionate and knowledgeable about tennis running the center. That's significant. The Woods Park Tennis Center project is also the heart of all of the outreach that goes on in the community through the other public tennis courts in the community, as well as community learning centers and other community partners. Something else that is significant about this is the role that the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board has played in this. As we have developed now two tenure facilities plans, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board has been involved in reviewing those, and as part of that process, they make a recommendation about the prioritization of projects that will involve fundraising, and that recommendation goes to the Parks Foundation Board of Directors, and it's at that time that the Foundation Board of Directors makes a determination about which projects to initiate and move forward with. The Woods Park Tennis Center project, during both versions of the tenure facility plan, has been identified as the number-one project that we should be moving forward with, and that was really in part why this project moved forward, and obviously, the other part was that we had significant partners who were willing to move this project forward and help bring it to success. The proposal that is before you this afternoon is to allocate 1.25 million of Keno funds that have come in above and beyond projections over the past few years. The total city project, or, tell me, the total city financial commitment to the project would be $1.71 million, and this is a significant opportunity. Essentially, every dollar that the city is putting into this project is being matched by $3 of private fundraising, so a great opportunity for the city to make this happen. We believe that this is a cost-efficient solution over time. This project would construct a large building that would have at least a 75-year lifespan. We did investigate the potential of replacing the existing air structures with new air structures, and the cost, absent any cost for mechanical systems, was about $1.2 million. If we chose to do that, those bubbles would have a lifespan of perhaps maybe 15 to 20 years. There would then again be this discussion happening again relatively soon in the future. And the other thing that would happen with that is that all of the donor dollars that have been identified have been for construction of the new hard-sided facility, so those dollars would not be available to replace the bubble, so essentially, it would be, have to be all city funding involved in replacement of the bubble. So we think this is the most cost-effective solution over the long term. The other thing I think that's important about this is that by the city investing in this facility, essentially, we are assisting with the continuation of public tennis in the community, and tennis is an important lifetime recreation activity, and as I indicated earlier, Woods Tennis really is the heart of that program in our community. Significant, and this is like many of our other projects, this project does have an endowment, so that ensures that the long-term costs in terms of repair and replacement of this building are going to be taken care of. The Lincoln Parks Foundation will appropriately invest those funds, manage those funds, and then as repair and replacement projects come up in the future, those funds will be available to take care of this. So essentially, we're trying to make sure that we are reducing the long-term liability or long-term expenses associated with this. And I think the other thing that the City Council already knows is that timing on this project is critical, and that's why we're before you this afternoon, is that this is the opportunity to get the project under construction yet this summer. We would like to avoid winter work because that will add cost to the project. We'd also like to avoid delaying the project for a year because inflationary costs will again increase the overcost, or the overall cost for this project, so our recommendation is to proceed in this manner at this point. With that, I'm going to introduce Kristy Dionisopoulos, and let Kristy talk about the foundation's role in this project.
Hi, I'm Kristy Dionisopoulos. I'm the Director of the Lincoln Parks Foundation, and my address is 2421 Switchback Road. Sorry, I have a long name to write. My first meeting as a Lincoln Parks Foundation Board member was back in 2005. I was actually representing the Friends of Pinehurst Park Nature Center, and at that meeting, the foundation voted to take out a $1.2 million loan to purchase the Martin property that is just north of the nature center, and it was a really historic day because we were really going out on a limb. We didn't have those type of funds back then, but we knew how important it was, and the city didn't have funding pulled together yet to purchase that property, so we stepped in, purchased it, and then the city was able to pull funding together and, I guess, paid us back for that. But how priceless that that space is, a prairie and not acreages, as it was slated to become. And second, fast-forwarding a couple years, I don't know if you all remember the Big Ditch, that's, it was termed the Big Ditch, just north of O Street between 21st and 22nd. There was this vision to make a park out of that, and we were told that we were absolutely crazy, that that was a silly idea, whoever would support that, and we went forward and we raised the funds, and today it's Union Plaza, and I think we're all really proud of that. And then, a couple years later, Centennial Mall, we all know was an eyesore for years, a liability, an embarrassment, and we're really excited that this September, we're going to be celebrating our donor dedication of the completion of that project. And if you notice, I use the term "we" a lot. When I say "we," it's not just the Parks Foundation. We have an amazing team of people that work together, City Council, Mayor's Office, the Parks and Rec Department, our volunteers, our donors, our board. Together, we have, we have made so many amazing projects happen in Lincoln, and, you know, we're not the type of people who seek out public accolades. We're the kind of people who put our heads down and do whatever it takes to get the job done, and to be perfectly honest, we have another project waiting in the wings, and we need to just keep rolling. But I did want to take a minute to mention all of the projects that we collectively have done over the years. The Parks Foundation has been around for 24 years, but this was kind of interesting, pulling all this together. We played a role in Schleich Park, Schwarzkopf Park, Rickman's Run, Antelope Park Playground, Fleming Fields, the initial Woods Park improvements, Sunken Gardens renovation, the Hayman Rose Garden renovation, Sherman Field renovation, Martin Prairie acquisition, Hazel Able renovation, Union Plaza, Union Plaza Programming, Centennial Mall renovation, Airport Entryway, Tower Square, P Street Enhancement Endowment, and the N Street Bike Way Endowment. And those are the larger projects. We've been involved in a lot of smaller projects over the years. We have $6.2 million endowments right now that cover both park projects, or parks and programming, and we've raised over $30 million. We've raised over $30 million in major park projects, and as Lynn mentioned, the Parks and Rec Advisory, our department, works with the Advisory Board to identify priority projects, and those come to the Parks Foundation Board, and we are asked to serve as the fiscal sponsor and to take on the fundraising campaign. In April of 2014, the Woods Tennis Center project was approved by the City Council, and we assembled an amazing team of volunteers, and we charged forward on that campaign. So two years later, I come to you with just over $4.9 million committed from over 400 donors. The foundation, we are also committed to raising an additional $200,000. We feel that with this amount, we will have reached our fundraising limit. So on behalf of the Parks Foundation Board, our campaign volunteer team, and the over 400 donors who have... 400 donors who have given to this project, I ask you to please consider helping us reach the project goal of 6.3 million dollars. This is currently the priority project for both the department and the foundation. And we've enjoyed and we really appreciate our partnership that we've had and all of the great projects that we have made happen. And we want to continue to work together and wrap up this campaign because, yes, there are more waiting. And I'd love to add Woods Tennis Center to our list of projects completed. Our generous donors and volunteer team are counting on us to make this happen, so thank you for your consideration. Any questions?
Questions? All right. Thank you.
Christie, could you speak to the amount of the endowment that you've committed to raising as a foundation?
For this project?
For the Woods Tennis Project?
Yes. We have committed to an endowment of $600,000. And the way that we come to that number is J.J. Yost and the Parks Department, they look at life cycle costs of the project and project those out and what would be needed to pay for improvements over 20 years. And I guess he might be able to speak more to the specifics of that, but we have committed to our donors a $600,000 endowment.
And when you get the donors committing all these incredibly generous pledges, you know, do you have a timeline for collection, or how does that piece of it work, given, you know, this is a pretty big contribution from the city that would go into effect more immediately?
Sure. For this project, it was a little bit unusual in that in the past, I think all of our campaigns, we've had up to a four-year pledge commitment. For this project, we actually had a five-year pledge commitment. So we have intent forms that people signed saying their total amount that they were committing, and then a timeframe of when their payments would come in. So I believe the last, most of our payments are coming in this year and next year. And then we have a couple that are the year after. So it will go out a couple of years.
And has, yeah, and do you ever have trouble collecting on those commitments? Or are they?
You know what? We are really proud of our default rate is incredibly low. The national average is 5% to 10%, and ours is actually less than a half a percent. And we communicate very well with our donors, keep in constant communication with them. We send out pledge payment reminders. We make phone calls if needed. We've been really lucky in that sense. So, thank you.
Other questions? All right. Thank you.
J.J. Yost, our Planning and Construction Manager, is next going to talk about the project itself.
Good afternoon. J.J. Yost, Planning and Construction Manager for the Parks and Recreation Department. Really just wanted to touch on a few of the basic design elements associated with the new indoor tennis facility. And "basic" is going to kind of be the key word here, "basic" and practical. It's a very straightforward design that consists primarily of a large, pre-engineered metal building with the purpose of housing six indoor tennis courts. The building program itself will consist of the tennis courts, kind of a minimal amount of spectator space and rotation space around the courts, some storage, again, kind of minimal amounts of storage needed to operate the facility, the space that's associated with mechanical equipments and HVAC equipments, and of course, we've got some restrooms for the public use. I would consider the design to be basic and practical in that it simply meets those current program needs. The design team did consider this pre-engineered metal building to be the most cost-effective and efficient approach to creating this kind of big building construction. The building has been designed to fit into the characteristics of the surrounding neighborhood. Most notably, we have the historic Bungalow District just to the south of J Street, just essentially across the street from the park. And so we've worked in design elements that make that building feel compatible with the surrounding neighborhood and bring the scale of it down. Double gables on the roofs help reduce that overall scale or size feeling of the building. Lower single-story portion on the south end, which is kind of the public end of the main entrance to the building, again, brings down that scale and increases some efficiencies in the building. There's some brick wainscoting on the perimeter that ties into the aesthetics of the other surrounding park facilities, the pump house associated with the pool, the poolhouse itself, and the existing tennis clubhouse. Also during the design process, we identified some of the program elements that could potentially be incorporated into a future phase of the project and are deferring those until a later time in order to reduce the square footage of this building and thus the construction costs. A lot of thought and a lot of planning went into what those additional elements or program items might be as we went through what I would call a value engineering process to reduce the current construction cost to the minimum they could be. But we also wanted to design the facility in such a manner that those additional elements could be added in the future without disrupting the current design or essentially having to undo what we're building now. I think Kevin Himes from the Woods Tennis Center is going to talk a little bit on what some of those elements are that are being deferred at this time. And I wanted to touch on, but Lynn kind of hit on the timing element and the importance of getting started on construction so that we do hit or get as much of this done and enclosed before winter weather comes along because accommodating or working with winter weather can potentially increase the costs. And obviously, we're trying to avoid that. Oh, I did have an image for you. So that's just an architectural rendering of the building that does show the proposed gable roofs, the single-story first end of the building there on the south, and then the three outdoor tennis courts that you see immediately to the right of the new double-gabled roof building is really where the existing bubbles sit today that would be returned to outdoor courts.
Questions? Lauren.
J.J., proponents of the project have argued, Lynn touched on this, that the new agreement with Friends of Woods Tennis would shift some of the future capital and maintenance costs to the private sector. Can you elaborate on that? Can you explain the cost benefit there for the city?
Certainly. By having the endowment that you just talked to Christie about, by having that endowment in place to cover repair and replacement costs, obviously, things will wear out. HVAC equipment will break down and wear out over time. Tennis court surfacing or courts have to be resurfaced over time. Lights burn out. All those kinds of things that just happen with anybody's household over time need to be repaired and replaced in order to keep things in safe and efficient operation. Having this endowment in place gives us a funding source to go to, to make those repairs in a timely manner, not have to do any sort of delayed maintenance, therefore handle them upfront, keep the building in good operational order, and not have to wait for the next CIP cycle or something like that, which again, then is a burden on us. It takes away potential repair and replacement dollars for other projects. So, to me, that's a huge benefit.
Can you quantify it roughly, on an annual basis?
Boy, I'd have to get back to you on that number. It's in the thousands of dollars on an annual basis. For the first few years, obviously with the new building, you don't expect much, but when that building gets to be 10 years and 20 years old, that potentially is thousands of dollars.
Well, have there been maintenance costs previous to now and leading up to now, including today, that you're going to go away?
Well, there's been a lot of cost for duct tape to hold the bubbles together. But I don't have the history of the costs that have gone into the bubbles today and the HVAC system there, but I could get that number.
Jane.
J.J., I don't know if you can talk about some of the energy savings or utility costs with the old bubbles versus this new structure? And then who typically, is it the foundation that picks up the monthly utility costs to heat?
Well, I might have to let Lynn or Kevin talk a little bit about how the operating agreement works with Woods Tennis. But what I do know is this building will certainly be much more energy efficient because those bubbles were, they are not energy efficient. They simply are not. And with the new metal-sided building and some insulation and the use of LED lighting and more high-efficiency HVAC systems, we absolutely project the costs, those monthly operational costs or utility costs, to go down and fairly significantly. Now, I believe that really helps out in the operation of the facility. The Friends of Woods Tennis are responsible for paying their monthly operations, and so this will just help them in an operational standpoint primarily.
Thank you.
Other questions?
For staff?
Let him get through their presentation. I think they have three, unless you, yeah, let's get through the presentation.
Sure, thank you.
Next testifier.
Quick introduction of Steve Hubka, the City Finance Director. Steve can talk a little bit about the source of these Keno funds because these are funds that have come in over time and have accrued but have not specifically been allocated to a project yet.
Yeah, Steve Hubka, Finance Director. These Keno money, of course, is a game of chance, gambling, and we've always taken a position in the Finance Department that it's not our most reliable source of revenue, although it has exceeded those expectations at times. We budgeted based on a gross for many years of 22 million, and we have had a couple downturns in that. When the smoking ban came into place in 2006, we had a couple of years of a downturn. And with the recession in 2008 and '09, we had a downturn in our receipts. But other than that, in recent years, it's been a steady upward trend. We're expecting to take in about 31 million or more of gross proceeds, and of course, most of that goes back to the players of the game. But that results in an appropriation or an amount of money available to the Parks Department, about a million four. And we've been programming about a million, a little over a million, million one for several years. And so from the 2013-14 fiscal year, we took in 420,000, 102,000 over our projections. In 2014-15, it was 483,965. And in the current year, 2015-16, it'll probably be in that same range. So we've accumulated a significant amount of money above and beyond what we've programmed, and that is available for this project if the council so chooses to use it that way. The other thing I'd say is on item 17 while I'm here, that that is simply amending the amount of the CIP in order to have the spending authority for the project that it needs at this point.
Jane.
Steve, can you talk a little bit about the restriction on the use of Keno funds? What can the Keno funds be used for in normal course of government business?
Well, I think the state law, if I'm not mistaken, says community betterment. But in the case of Lincoln, we allocate 65% of the net that we get to Parks and Rec, 30% to libraries, and 5% to human services.
So that funding can only go to Parks and Recreation, library, and human services? We cannot use it for other expenditures?
Not under the current ordinance, no, or city code.
Thank you.
How loud do you think it is in the bubbles right now?
Probably really loud out in the hallway here.
Any other questions for Steve?
Just one. So the 65% that goes to Parks and Rec every year, what's that total every year? Is there a pretty constant?
It's been going up. I think, Lynn, you've been programming about 1.1?
Yeah, that's exactly right. Yeah, within the CIP, we program about a million dollars a year. And then we have some money that's allocated to assist with fund development, and then actually a portion of that money goes to pay for a portion of the city grant writer's salaries.
All right. Any other questions? All right.
You know, and the guy who can probably tell us what it sounds like inside the bubbles right now is Kevin Hime. Kevin Hime is the Executive Director of the Woods Park Tennis Center. Kevin's here to talk about operation, the importance of this facility.
Thanks, Lynn. Before I get started, Rick Hayth, one of the speakers, unfortunately, right before he was taken ill, so he will not be presenting today, but I've included a couple of his notes in mind. I am Kevin Hime, I'm the Executive Director of Woods Tennis Center, 2948 Wendover Avenue. I appreciate the opportunity once again to share our story and the depth of programming across the community. I'd like to explain the relationship with Friends of Woods Tennis and the city. We are a nonprofit that currently has the operating agreement to manage the facility at Woods Park. Prior to Friends of Woods Tennis, the Woods Park Tennis Corporation brought an indoor presence to the tennis community as a public facility, funding the purchase of the bubbles and managing the facility for nearly 25 years. As the operator, we do not receive any tax support from the city. Friends of Woods Tennis pays the city 5% of our gross revenue, and that money is placed into a CIP fund that helps maintain the outdoor courts. Everything currently inside the lobby in the bubbles is maintained and paid for by Friends of Woods Tennis. This is very different from other public tennis facilities across the country, and to be honest, it works. We enjoy our relationship with the city parks, and we want to see that continue into the future. In 2002, a capital campaign, Parked at Woods, was organized by tennis patrons and volunteers to provide not only tennis courts and a brand-new clubhouse, but also other amenities. And I believe Mark Donlin will speak to that in a little bit, so I'll cut that part out. Knowing there was an imminent need to replace the bubbles, the Friends of Woods Tennis was formed and has brought the community together to show strong support for a new facility. We have built a very strong, award-winning program onsite, as well as a nationally-recognized community program, working with other nonprofits across the city. Without a plan in place, programming that's grown tenfold in the last eight years would be completely lost. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to share this lifetime sport with people of all ages and backgrounds across the city. It truly has been a very unique opportunity for me, and it is different than anything else within tennis. Many people continue to equate tennis as a sport that is only available for a select portion of the population, and at Woods Tennis Center, we're able to make it our mission to do just the opposite. We feel that over the past eight years, we have proven that this is more than just talk. The program is unique. We provide opportunities and take the game to others. Did you know that our adult program includes leagues and lessons, and it's the second-largest in the state? The junior program is not only the largest in the state, but it's also the largest in a five-state Missouri Valley section. Our wheelchair program, which Rick Hayth was going to speak to, in partnership with Madonna Rehabilitation Hospital, is the largest in over half the country. We have raised over $80,000 since 2009 for scholarships and to provide rackets for first-time players and those that cannot afford their own. Over 3,400, 3,400 free rackets have been distributed during that time. Each year, over 1,000 low-income children are provided the opportunity to participate in once- or twice-a-week lessons at places like Community Learning Centers, the City Rec Centers, Salvation Army, Boys and Girls Club, People's City Mission, Malone Center, Lighthouse, and many others. Juniors participate in school tennis, USTA tennis, and adults who also play in leagues and tournaments come from not just across the state or locally, but regionally here to Woods Tennis Center. We have players ages three to 93 who participate at Woods Tennis Center, and their levels of play range from entry level to national champion. We work with over 200 wheelchair participants every year through Madonna Rehabilitation Hospital. And we've just begun a junior program to help incorporate kids that eventually, we hope, will play on their able-bodied high school tennis teams. Did you know that we have players that have won seven US Open wheelchair championships? A lot of people are unaware of that. We are a partner with other organizations to promote healthy lifestyles and drop childhood obesity with a partnership for a healthy Lincoln. Most facilities focus only on high-level competition for juniors or only recreation or entry-level lessons. Others focus only on adult programming. At Woods Tennis Center, our business model as a public facility is to provide tennis opportunities for all levels, ages, and backgrounds. Our programming campaign motto is "Taking the Game to the Community." We do just that. The growth of tennis in Lincoln is directly attributed to this. We do not wait for people to show up on our doorstep because that limits the pool of tennis players to those from tennis families or their friends, and stereotypically, people with the means to purchase memberships. It is important to share with everyone that Woods Tennis Center is not a country club. Woods Tennis Center is not just a community center serving low-income children. We are a blend of both, providing opportunities for the public who can afford lessons as well as creating opportunities and a pathway for those who cannot afford lessons by partnering with nonprofit organizations all around the community. We are the YMCA of country club sports.
One minute.
When you walk into a YMCA, you see people from all different backgrounds. It's not just the underprivileged, it's not just the privileged. There are folks from all walks of life. For those that come through the doors at Woods, this is the experience they have on a daily basis. Fully funding this project grows the game and opportunities for everyone. By not doing so, we limit indoor tennis to private clubs and only those people that are able to afford memberships. We, the Friends of Woods Tennis, are asking for this funding support. this funding support, but the reality is the building and the program are yours. Please help us to successfully match three-for-one every dollar that we have raised privately for this public facility. Thank you. And to address JJ's, he had talked about some of the other items that are being cut out of this in the design because it is a simple building. We previously had a community meeting room, an after-school tutoring room, office space, expanded locker rooms, more mezzanine and lower-level, ground-level viewing, a lounge, and storage. So those have all been cut from this design during the value engineering stage. And to address the question about utilities, we anticipate, we've been told preliminary that we should anticipate a 75% cost savings compared to the, we budget now $10,000 a month for gas and heat and electrical.
All right, questions? Cindy.
Thank you for being here today, Kevin. I understand that you said you do outreach from Woods Tennis Center, and I'm just interested in what outreach is, is reaching into the northeast part of Lincoln, which I represent.
Yeah, actually, we have quite a bit in that area of town. We've worked with a lot of the community learning centers. Several of them are located in that area. The first one that pops in my mind is Northeast Family Center. But we're also working with several other of those after-school programs. Each semester, we work with at least a minimum of 12 of the community learning centers during the school year. And then during the summer, we provide programming. It's primarily through the City Rec Centers and then some of the other nonprofits. The City Rec Centers do have, they do have representation in the northeast part of town. In fact, what a lot of people are unaware of is the northeast part of town actually has more, probably arguably, more tennis courts, outdoor tennis courts per capita than, than the other parts of town. So it's a very good area for us to be able to reach out, and there are several low, or quite a bit of low-income children out in that area.
And so do you have teams of kids that come out and learn there, or they come from northeast down to the Woods Center?
Both. It's primarily, we go to them at the entry level. And by entry level, primarily kids that are in grades. We start with grades three, and we go up through grades eight in the after-school program. The summer program is all ages. But if they're a beginner, maybe an advanced beginner, we usually go to them. And then that's what actually prompted us to start the scholarship program at Woods Tennis Center and raise that money was, okay, they work with us for a couple of years, but then, then what? And so we wanted an opportunity to get them higher-level instruction at Woods Tennis Center, and that's when we started that scholarship program.
Do you have any idea how many kids out in the northeast area are involved in your program?
I don't, I don't know exactly each area, but I can, but I know that during the school year, we work with over 1,000 children in that after-school program that we go out in the community. And then during this, during the summer, with the City Rec Centers and the other nonprofits we work with, that number's over 900.
Thank you.
Yep.
Jane.
Kevin, can you talk a little bit about Lincoln Public Schools and how they utilize this facility outside of the Community Learning Center after-care programs?
Yeah, well, onsite at Woods Tennis Center, the Lincoln Public Schools, all six public high schools, currently, they both utilize it for practice after school, but also for match play. In fact, that's their, their home site for all of their varsity matches. And then they have some of their JV and reserve matches are also played there as well, tournaments and duels. They, it's on a rotational basis for practice. They, each high school has three courts onsite, and most of these teams have 30, 40, or more kids on a team. And if you only have three courts, that's a lot of kids on each court. So that's why they have a rotational basis to practice. So every spring, every fall, and the boys and girls season, they're using the facility pretty much every day after school, and then on some Saturdays for tournaments.
Okay, thank you.
Very good.
Kevin, can you help us understand the connection between supporting the Woods Tennis Center in Woods Park and also then serving children throughout the community? I don't know that that's always, wasn't always especially clear to, to me, but can you speak to that?
Sure. When, when we talk about supporting Woods Tennis Center, and again, what we do is very unique, not just for tennis, but for public tennis. We've been able to grow that community programming and continue to grow it more than I ever anticipated, and we, we want to continue to go with that. The, the staff that we have at Woods, the lessons that we have at Woods and the rental, the court rentals, leagues, tournaments, the revenue that we create from Woods Tennis Center helps pay specifically for my community outreach director who organizes that entire program. His salary is, completely comes from that revenue at Woods Tennis Center. It helps us to keep the pricing down when we work with the community learning centers and the other nonprofits, and that's the goal. We're not, we don't, we're not looking to make a profit, but I want to continue to take the game to as many people as possible. So by supporting Woods Tennis Center, and this specifically, that's the home base. And without the home base, we don't have the program in the rest of the community. I hope that helps.
Other questions?
All right. Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
I should let Kevin actually do this introduction, but the next speaker is Fidon Ibrahimova, and hopefully that was close. And Fidon is, participates in the youth tennis programming at the Woods Park Tennis Center.
Good afternoon. My name is Fronia Brumova, and I'm a sophomore at Lincoln Southeast High School. My address is 4501 Elk Ridge Road. First of all, I would just like to say it's an honor to stand up here and talk to the City Council about Woods Tennis Center. I have been lucky enough to play at Woods for the past five years of my tennis life. The opportunities that Woods has given me in the community are absolutely amazing. When I first started at Woods, I could easily say that I was an extroverted child and didn't have a vision to play tennis in the future. As time went on, I found myself, myself spending hours and hours at Woods because the environment was so welcoming and it was a safe and happy place. I found that my confidence had shot, shot up through the roof, and that confidence wasn't just on the tennis court. At Woods, there are a lot of kids that look up to the older tennis players. Because of this, I have become a better leader and role model, which is shown through my presence on the Student Council at Southeast, the NSA Student Advisory Committee, and leadership clubs throughout Southeast. Woods has helped me build my leadership skills, and that is something that is extremely special to me. There is such a variety of people at Woods, and everyone is so willing to help one another. It doesn't matter what clothes you wear, what kind of racket you use, what kind of shoes you have here on your feet, or where you come from. Everyone at Woods is accepted, and all we want to do is spread tennis throughout our community. I am lucky enough to volunteer throughout the city at different parks and rec sites and help kids develop their love for tennis like Woods did for me. One thing that shines about Woods is that we help a tremendous amount of kids throughout our community. Woods has donated thousands of rackets for those who can't afford to get one, and tennis is a lifelong sport that everyone deserves the opportunity to give it a shot. Woods has a huge impact on my life and the lives of many others. They do much more for kids than any other sport in Lincoln. Please allow Woods Tennis Center to expand and continue to serve the next generation of off-the-leash in our community. Thank you.
Questions. Carl?
Thank you for, for coming forward today. And so tell us about, about youth tennis. What, what do you see in terms of participation with people your age and younger? What's the growth of, of the sport?
Well, being involved just takes up your time, and I think it's easier to find friends and people that have the same passion as you. So when I joined tennis, I found a lot of my current, like, best friends because I spend hours and hours on the court with them every day, on the weekends. And so it's just really fun. And I just, I think, I encourage everyone to try tennis because it's a lifelong sport, and you just meet a whole bunch of people, and they're different, and you just connect, and it's fun.
Other questions?
Can you describe in your own words what some of the, maybe the, the problems are with the existing facilities as you've experienced them playing?
Well, okay, this winter, actually, we had a huge snowstorm. And I remember I was at Woods playing with my dad, and I go onto the west bubble, and there's like a big, like there was a lot of snow, so the bubble was dented, and it was creating this little, like, loop in the bubble. And I remember Kevin and my father were throwing like, what is it? They were throwing like, like...
Something we made up at the hardware.
Yeah, like they were just throwing it on the bubble to get snow to fall off so that the bubbles could stay up. And I remember my younger sister and I, we were hitting tennis balls as hard as we can to get the snow to fall off because we noticed that they were coming apart, and it's just really sad. And I spent all my time at Woods, so it's kind of sad to slowly watch it fall apart.
Other questions? How is tennis at Lincoln Southeast High School?
Oh, it's great. We're actually, like, we've really proved ourselves this year. We have hack coming up on this Friday, and then state tennis next Thursday and Friday. But Southeast, we have a really good, you know, reputation for tennis, so it's going really well, and we're really excited to finish off strong this year.
That's a former night. I'm very excited to hear that.
Yes, yes.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Thanks for being here.
You're welcome.
God doesn't like the night.
Yeah, I know.
The last speaker in our organized presentation this afternoon is Marg Donlin.
Who likes the rockets.
Absolutely. What can I add?
Just turn it on. I want this.
Here we go. It's coming up.
Yeah, you're now part of my, my talk.
There we go.
My name is Marg Lincoln Donlin, and I live in East Lincoln at 510 Lakewood Drive. I've taken a leadership role in the capital campaign to build the permanent structure for the indoor courts. I'm one of the volunteers who's helped raise over 4.4 million private dollars for this project. These are charitable contributions coming from 406 unique donors. And today, I'm asking you to reinforce the generosity of our donors by using the excess Keno funds that have become available and make this in addition to our city park, which we can be proud of. I've been watching the PBS series called "The National Parks: America's Best Idea," and it's helped me focus on the purpose of our parks. They're designed to bring us together, to blend all segments of our society. They're meant literally to be a common ground. As citizens, parks make us healthier, happier, more connected, and we interact with each other. I'm proud of where I live, and I strive, I strive to be a positive influence in the things I do. As City Council members, you've stepped up to service on the City Council, and I respectfully thank each one of you for that. The group of tennis players I'm a part of are a great grassroots group who are also committed to public service. Back in 1992, I joined with a group of tennis leaders, and some of them are here today. Sandy Hilsabek, Kyle Johnson, and Marilyn Olson, who has passed away, but her husband Sam Olson is here as well. There were others in this group, Henry Cox, Tom Tipton, and John Wilson. And together, we helped develop and lead the previous Parket at Woods capital campaign. Back then, Sandy and I would meet at Sandy's house to strategize, set up appointments, have meetings, and write thank-you notes. And even without paying a professional fundraiser, our team raised about 1.1 million dollars. That campaign ended in 2002 and was led by the tennis community, which made improvements to all components in the park, not just the tennis facility. And that's when I want to, you can see this?
Yeah.
Okay, so, and can you still hear me if I move over here?
Oh, yeah.
So the money that we raised helped build the trail that runs throughout the park. That's this trail that runs all the way through. It's where the people walk their dogs and then stop for doggy treats at Woods Park Tennis. A good little marketing ploy that Kevin's group has done. We added the basketball goal, which is right about here where K Street intercepts 33rd Street. And then we paid for two art sculptures that are in the park. One is the steamroller bicycle, and the other's the little cowboy with the, with the saddle that's over here between the playground and the, and the basketball court. We also built three additional tennis courts, which are the ones we now have to tear out, unfortunately. There's, there's my lesson in not planning for the future. We added the new tennis clubhouse, the Central Plaza, and the water sculpture that's in that plaza. Lynn Johnson was a new park director who stepped up on the city side. Working with the master plan and with the park budget, a variety of improvements were added to the park, including landscaping the spray ground that's adjacent to the swimming pool right here near the plaza, and the handicapped accessible playground that's in the middle of the park, which is up in this area. It was a partnership, and 14 years later, it's still a partnership. Both of us are a bit more sophisticated. Parks has a foundation staff, and we have Kevin, who's created this fabulous, successful, self-sustaining tennis program. From the beginning, Woods Tennis has been a successful public-private partnership. This group has been working for 40 years to grow public tennis, and it's part of the infrastructure in Lincoln. Now we're at a crossroads. This project we're here before you with is expensive, but it's an investment in the, in what has proven itself to be an exceptionally successful program. The goal is a permanent structure plus an endowment, and it's been designed to be an attractive, respectful addition to the neighborhood. The current campaign has raised over 4.4 million dollars from 406 donors, made up of individuals, families, neighborhood associations, and businesses.
One minute.
Thank you. To give you a comparison or a reference point on the broad support of this current campaign, this current campaign has garnered, the Centennial Mall, which was a $9.6 million project raised, was raised from 122 members, donors. The camp, this campaign has over three times the number of donors. So why does so many people give? Why does, do Woods patrons feel compelled to give to this campaign? Yes, it's because they like tennis, but I think people give to things they find important and to the people they trust. These families, businesses, and neighborhood association truts with going on at Woods Tennis. I give because I believe in the scholarships and the off-campus programs for the kids who are not always exposed to tennis. Tennis at Woods involves all segments of our society. It's good for our kids, our schools, and our community learning centers. Woods Tennis appeals to the wheelchair players and to the older adults who want to remain active. It's also a positive presence for the neighborhood around the park. Woods Tennis does what our parks are meant to do. It's a connector of people. It makes us healthier, happier, and it offers us a purpose to interact with each other. It adds to the quality of life in Lincoln. There's a great going, energy going on here, and with the energy at Woods Tennis, let's keep that momentum going. Let's attract new families and entice our kids to move back here to raise their families. Let's assure that Lincoln can offer tennis facilities to families that have come to depend on it. Our parks are our common ground, and tennis at Woods is our prime example. Let's show the generous donors that these, their gifts are appreciated. You have supported other park projects at this level. Please support this one. Let's come together as partners and pay it forward to the future generation of Lincolnites who will appreciate our endeavors for years to come. Thank you.
Questions?
All right. Thank you very much.
That ends our formal presentation. I know that there's a number of supporters of the project here, and I might ask those people who play tennis to raise your hand, or who play at Woods, to raise your hand. And those folks who are donors to the project, you'd be willing to raise your hands as well. So we have a number of supporters here this afternoon. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. I know that there were a number of questions asked and answered during the presentation. I also want to let the City Council know, I know that we discussed this during the two o'clock meeting, but we are requesting a one-week delay to allow us some additional time to work on some of the details of the agreements. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions, and we appreciate your patience this afternoon as well.
I'm not sure if this is a question for you or the folks from the foundation, but the project originally had a lower budget in the 5 million range. We've heard that it's been value engineered to help bring the cost down, but actually, the price of the project is still now higher at 6.3 million. How firm is that estimate? I mean, do you have construction bids? What, you know, what happens if, when you get construction bids, if you don't have them already, they're higher? What, can you help us understand the, the shifting of the total project cost?
That is a great question. And let me back clear up, we had some very generous people doing some, some pro bono work at the very beginning of this project, and that's where our initial cost estimates came from, was some people doing pro bono work, and we were very appreciative of that. As we've gotten into the project, and we've, we've been able to delve further into it now that we have, Clark Enerson is the, the architectural firm that's been hired for the project. We also have taken a little bit different approach to this project because we were worried about what would happen if we did a traditional design bid build project. And so we actually are using a CM@RIS model. So we have gone through the selection process. Sampson Construction has been hired to be the CM@RIS. Sampson Construction has been involved in this value engineering process. They have been involved in helping to, to They have been involved in helping to generate the cost estimates that we're working from today. Both they feel, and Clark Anderson feels, that the numbers that we're working with are very good at this point. We won't know until Sampson gets through the process of bidding the rest of the elements of the project. The big metal building portion of this was just bid, and actually the costs on that appear to have come in just slightly under their estimates. So that's one big chunk of this project that we know what the cost is going to be at this point. So, part of what's happening with some of the reviews that are, or some of the review of the documents that's being prepared, is we feel like we need someplace to go just in case that the cost estimates do end up being low. And one of the things we want to talk about within the revised documents is, where do we go in case the costs end up a little bit higher? Right now the suggestion is maybe we go to the endowment, and we have an ongoing program that will be at the Woods Park Tennis Center, where people will have a chance to recognize coaches and recognize players. And we'll continue, those funds will go into the endowment fund to continue to build it over time. But we're very confident about the numbers at this point, but we also need to have a contingency plan. So, that's where we're at at this point.
John?
Yeah, maybe just to summarize too, today we're focusing mainly on the 1.25 million from the Keno funds. And I know in some of the materials before us, there was already 510,000 committed by the city through a combination of prior increments and other Keno funds, if I'm not mistaken. It shows here 1.71 million.
Yeah, a total of 460,000 at this point has been committed.
No, I'm showing another 500, another 50 on top of that to get 1.71 million is what's here on the city's roll, page two of the agreement.
Yeah.
Quantify what we've got.
Yeah, the request is today is for 1.25 million of unallocated Keno, in addition to the 460,000 that's already been committed. So that brings us to 1,710,000.
Okay, and then, I don't know, Mr. Hubcomb, may he answer, there's engagement of PC Sports or Project Control that's going to oversee it, and that was a fee of 60,000. Is that coming out of this amount, or is that going to be?
It is.
So the 1.71 million is a total?
Okay.
Other questions?
Well, actually, I do. So, we heard that the project has been designed to allow for future expansion because it's been value engineered and some of the pieces have been removed. And we also heard that in the past, other courts were built, but they're going to have to be torn down to make room for this project. Can you give us some assurances about how the long-term planning for this has been undertaken such that we wouldn't have to undo some of the construction that's being proposed today? Can you give us some reassurance that this is money well-spent that won't be, have to be, you know, made up for in different ways in the future?
Absolutely. I'll ask the staff to turn the Elmo unit back on, and I'll explain a little bit about the master planning that has gone on. There we go. This is the adopted master plan for the Woods Park Tennis Center, and this is the version that the city council has seen. The six indoor tennis courts are being built in this location. And I should back up and say, we want to take a very detailed look and make sure that we weren't precluding future opportunities for expansion of the tennis center. The next central four courts would go in this location, and then there would be a connection made between the existing clubhouse and the rest of that overall building. So we're confident at this point that the overall facility could be at least 10 courts, 10 indoor courts. It could be up to 12 indoor courts, and the building is being placed to accommodate that so that we know in the future how the next phases could be incorporated into the park without having to do what we're doing at this point, which is eliminating a set of courts to build the new building.
What will be there in the meantime, in the phases that aren't being built right away?
This area right here is where one of the bubbles is. And so, as soon as the new indoor courts are constructed, both of these bubbles will come down. And those were originally outdoor courts, they'll be restored, returned to outdoor play. And then there will be a, there'll be a fence that will connect the west end of the clubhouse building to the east end of the new building, and that'll be the walkway connection between the clubhouse and that new center. All people who are coming to the center will come through the clubhouse, and then they'll walk through that connecting link over to the new building.
I think I can read it. Does it say for covered indoor courts is what the future plan would be? So, if those are going to be restored to outdoor courts, will the money used to restore them to outdoor courts, is that part of this covered indoor plan? I mean, can you then just cover the outdoor courts, or will those have to be torn up?
Most likely, they would. When we get to that point, at some point in the future, yeah, those courts would likely have to be removed, demolished, to make room for these new courts. There isn't, we could investigate it, but at least the layout that we have at this point would suggest that we'd have to demolish those courts to build that new building in that location.
And how much money would you spend to build the outdoor courts there?
They're there.
Yeah, they're already in place.
So just, you would just remove the bubble, is what you're saying?
Correct, exactly, exactly, I'm sorry.
All right, any other questions? Roy?
You did mention that we're going to delay one week for action on this, and we'll also have testimony. But can you give the members of the public an idea of how soon these modifications you're working on to the contract? How soon will they be out so that people can look at them so they can make comments next week?
It's a great question. I think the intent is to have those in the council packet on Thursday, so they will be available for review. And the intent also, the other party in this obviously, is the Lincoln Parks Foundation, and the desire is to get those to the Parks Foundation Board so they get a chance to review them as well.
I would just add that you've made the argument that the endowment is one of the compelling pieces for this project, so as you look at contingencies, that's something to keep in mind.
I absolutely agree. That is worst case, that's the last place that we'll go to, but...
All right, any other questions for Lynn? All right, thanks Lynn.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to this item, please come forward. All right. Do you want to move the delay now, or should we wait till the voting section?
I move we delay a week with public hearing.
Second? Second by Carl. Discussion? All right, call the rule on the delay.
Three.
What's that?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes. Lamb?
Yes.
Yes. Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Motion carrying seven zero.
Okay, move on to item 18, please.
Item 18, miscellaneous 16001 declaring the South University Place redevelopment area, which consists of approximately 37 acres of land, generally bounded by Holdridge Street and Francis Street and 48th Street to 49th Street, including Uni Place Park to the north as blighted and substandard.
Members of the city council, David Landis, urban development department director, the applicant in this case. Now I know what they're going to do with the money that I donated when I went to the Jim Courier tennis match at the Pinnacle Bank Arena this last year.
David, can you move the microphone closer to you, or check that it's on? It's kind of quiet.
Thank you. I do see a green light.
Okay.
We're here, you're coming through now. All right. I'll speak from the diaphragm.
We don't want to miss a word.
Okay. The steps that you would go through to create ultimately a redevelopment project are four in number. First, you have to declare an area blighted and substandard. Then you have to do a plan for that area. Then, when there's a specific project, you need it shadowed in the plan with a plan amendment, and finally, a redevelopment agreement. We're occasioned to be here today by a developer who'd like to do a project in this area, so we're starting the first of all those four steps. And this one comes to you after having been at the planning commission and having been sent on to you unanimously. It is to declare 37 acres in northeast Lincoln blighted and substandard. This is a map of that. To orient yourself, this is Holdridge and this is 48th Street. If you were in high school about the time that I was, you'd know that the Tasty Inn is here. If you were, a couple of friends of mine who got married, they had their wedding registry at the QP store, right there. Interesting place to be registered for a wedding, I suppose. There's a block in the floodplain here.
Pretty hardwood apartment.
Yeah, well, thank you. And there is an area that was once a gas station, probably with some environmental areas, that are also contributing to one of the factors that the Hannah-Kielan study finds, as the presence of blighted and substandard conditions. If you were to drive the area and step inside, you would find something that I think makes a compelling case for these conditions to be certainly less than ideal, and something deserving of redevelopment, if at all possible. The Tasty Inn structure's been unused for more than two years, and it's next to a QP store that's also been closed about that same period of time. Nobody stepped forward to buy and refurbish these buildings. They oftentimes contain damage, whether it's from water damage on the roof. There is some material that is just gathered, in need of being carried off. The soffits and the supporting windows in some of these structures are problematical. The sidewalks are not maintained. This is another section in the same area. This is an outbuilding towards the back of one of these locations. As you can see, there is a wide variety of conditions that are dilapidated. One of the blighted and one of the substandard, both list of conditions that are present. Good deal of the infrastructure's 45 years old or older. And the Hannah-Kielan study looked at all of the structures within those 37 acres and reports them here. The study was done at the behest of the developer, and they paid for it. And a copy's been given to you, as it was by the planning commission. We did include a park area. This is not without precedent, it's been done a number of times. There are very few structures there, but it is on top of conditions that are certainly an older infrastructure system. On occasion, there has been a logic to housing units and very nearby recreation facilities to be seen cooperatively. That even the developers would say, we'd like some of our resources to be used to further the park, it adds to an amenity that we would like to market. An example of that would have been the Creekside Village in the North Bottoms, where in fact we did work with the park. It was in our redevelopment agreement at the behest of the developer and vice versa, so that it could then have facilities that made the development itself more attractive. There is no known plan to do that here, but it remains a possibility, and for that reason, both the developer and the city agreed to these boundaries. What this does today, in the event you were to act at the appropriate time, it would say that we could use the tax increment financing tool inside these boundaries. Can't use it outside the boundaries, can use it within. And in the event we have a specific project, as we are working towards now, a project in this area essentially, we will draw boundaries for that project area, and that project will then move ultimately towards a redevelopment agreement. The developer that paid for this study and is working with us in furtherance of that, essentially a housing unit, a significant one at 40th and Holdridge, is here, present and available to answer your questions. And I'd answer any questions you might have for me.
Cindy?
Thank you. Okay, so, from the map, is this including then the university pool area?
Yes. I think it is. Here's the ball diamond. I think this is the pool, Cindy, although it's not Councilman Lamb, it's hard to make out. But I believe this is the park, the boundaries of the park, and that I believe is the pool.
And so, I guess I'm a little confused about blighting our own park and our pool. Can you just explain that to me a little bit?
Not every piece of land in a blighted and substandard area has to be blighted. There has to be an overall finding of those boundaries as being blighted and substandard. And in a court case that emanated out of York, the court said, basically, you can have a land that's not blighted and substandard in a blighted and substandard area so long as there is a rationale that ties the two together. We're not saying that the parkland is not blighted and substandard. We're not saying that it is blighted and substandard. I would say it qualifies under the City of York's rule that says there is a rationale for putting both of those. If, for example, you had a beautiful new building, right here, let's say, but you were looking at the utilities in the area, all of it, the law would allow us to draw a boundary that included that in this area. Otherwise, you'd have a sort of a Swiss cheese kind of effect in which you evaluated each and every piece of property, deciding whether it was blighted or substandard. The question is, is there an underlying rationale for the area? We claim there is. It's up for the city council to decide what they think is appropriate.
So just to clarify, everything up to that point, south of the pool and the park, we're saying that area, south of that is blighted, and the park area is not necessarily blighted?
We are saying that, we are asking for a blight designation from here to here, and from here to here. So it would include this area.
Okay.
We've done that on occasion in the past. Sawyer Snell, Sherman Field, Havlock Park, the North Bottoms Park, let's see, oh, Penzer Park are all areas that are inside of blighted and substandard areas. Idlewild Park? I don't know, but perhaps, I'm not sure. It wasn't in the list that I asked for, but if you're saying that it is, I accept you at your word. I just, I ran down the examples I could think off the top of my head.
Roy?
So, would it be safe to say there's an intention of spending some of the TIF money inside that park area?
It wouldn't be the present intention, it is a possibility. The developer and us are now looking at the neighborhood. Claims for the TIF resources are probably higher at the moment to make sure that the buffering of the project is as satisfactory to the neighborhood as possible. We've had an early read from the neighborhood of a very positive response, but they are concerned about the landscaping and buffering. Perhaps Councilwoman Lamb would remember that at the meeting that she went to. At the moment, I would suggest that probably has a higher priority for some of the TIF resources. On the other hand, over time, resources might expand, and it would then be available to be used here. There isn't a current plan for those. It has not been something that we've said to the developer, we'll help you if you'll help the park. We haven't said that. We've said, how can we make this project work? And that's the conversation we're having.
Other questions?
The area on Garland, which would be just behind, I think it's, I think it's like, what, an old KFC or, that's over there, that's kind of that jet on the north side there? What is that? Yeah?
Um, I'm not sure what it is. We might know, but the boundary here is the boundary that abuts what's been declared blighted north of this.
Is that parkland? It's pretty heavy.
Okay, I think a yes that it is.
Is there strategy on, and there's also a lot of green space around here, you're including, and the bridge on the east side too, you're including as well. Is there strategy in that?
The east side?
Oh, it'd be on the other side, right there, there's a bridge.
The topic of the bridge itself has not been specifically broached in the conversations up until now. It's not uncommon for us to choose a strategy that says, where there's city of right-of-way that abuts a project. Oftentimes, if we want help with utilities or something like that, we include the city's right-of-way so that we can address the impact of a project, not only in the privately-owned land, but some of the publicly-owned land that might abut it. For example, you would have seen downtown on occasions the description of a project area to include city right-of-way like this, when this was the privately-owned land and upon which the development might occur. But one of the reasons we do that is that the service lines that do this, the utility lines, the sewer and the water, could have implications here, and we would like to consider the possibility of using this body of resources to help not only that project area, but the ancillary owners in the surrounding area. They endure the same, you know, older utilities' conditions. So on occasion, we use this as a way of updating a utility infrastructure.
You're also including the area on the west too, where coincidentally, there's item 37. So, just thought I'd note that. So just thought I'd note that. All right. Any other comments or questions?
It's a Dairy Queen. It's a Dairy Queen.
Oh, okay. Yeah. I like Dairy Queen.
I miss them. There aren't as many as there used to be.
Well, there's one right there.
At the planning commission hearing, it was, the question was raised about issues with traffic and block lengths that don't match up. And at the time, there wasn't an answer yet on, on how this project might address some of those issues. Do you have any further information about that?
I think I'd like to ask Tom Houston, who is more familiar with the exact status of the design of the project than I would be able to report to give you an answer to that. And Tom's here today.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? All right, thank you. Mr. Houston.
Chair members of the council, my name is Tom Houston. My address is 233 South 13th, Suite 1900 here in Lincoln. Appearing before you today on behalf of 48 Street Investments LLC, which is a company comprised of Schaefer Richardson Development out of Minneapolis and also Greenlee Properties from here in Lincoln. I only have four brief points and then I hope to answer some of the questions that you've raised. Number one, we've seen a resurgence in urban renewal efforts in and around the City of Lincoln. It's good to see that concentration being extended beyond just the downtown core area in northeast Lincoln. I think it's, North 48th Street's an important corridor within our city and this, this corridor is going to be important. There's been a lot of exciting things going on in this northeast area of town. As Director Landis indicated, this is step one of the process, the blight study that's in front of you. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. I mean, the primary reason in my mind why he includes the parkland is to create the possibility of use incremental revenues to make improvements to that park ground in the future. We've had numerous examples where we've done that in the past. And if you don't include the park in the blighted area, it can't be in the redevelopment area and it can't be the recipient of tax increment financing proceeds. So that's why you include the park ground. I don't take the negative connotation a lot of people do to the term blight because it actually enhances value in a lot of circumstances. And I think this is one of those circumstances where the blight designation really brings benefits to the table for that park ground. I do agree with the staff report in connection with the blight study and the fact sheet of the 37 acres. The substandard criteria, all four of those criteria were found to be present. Of the blighted criteria, seven of the 12 criteria were found to be present. The next step for this project, we do go before the planning commission this coming Wednesday on the actual redevelopment plan for the area. A change of zone with a planned unit development to allow a mixed-use development. And then also, we're vacating an ancient, it's an 1880s platted alley that is obsolete and non-functional that we're going to be vacating in place and leaving utilities, but incorporate it within the parking areas. So we hoped those additional steps will be back in front of you, probably mid-June is what we're projecting right now. And I'd ask for your support for the blight designation and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions? Larian.
You talked about the blight designation for the park and you understand sort of how that works and has worked traditionally in the city. How does your client feel about having that included in this project area?
I think they're open to it. I mean, with all the private ground that's potentially available for redevelopment, I think this is the first of perhaps multiple projects in this corridor. And I think there's going to be additional opportunities for improvements, not only in the additional private ground, but within the park ground. So yeah, my client was open to including the park ground within the terms of the blight study.
Because Mr. Landis argued, I think, before planning commission that it can be seen as something that enhances the value of the project itself for the developer. Is that, you would agree with that?
Sure, certainly. Having the recreational opportunities, I mean, didn't really want to talk about the project today because we're talking about the blight study, but I think you'll be excited about the project. It meets in all four corners, really, some of the underlying tenants of the comprehensive plan in trying to increase mixed-use opportunities, infill opportunities, redevelopment opportunities throughout the city and increase density. And with the increase in density, there needs to be enhancement of the recreational opportunities too. So certainly, there's a benefit for the redeveloper to be located next to a recreational area and a park. So we can get into that further in June.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other folks who'd like to speak to this item?
Hey, John. They need to go to jail. I have an agreement with my brothers. They can't see me in crutches anymore. Terry Pope Gonzalez, 349 South First Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. Do you know my brothers want me to be a developer? That'd be fun, huh? Okay, guys. Oh, can I sign this a little bit later? I don't have a pen. Oh, here, I got one. I'll sign in a minute. We're going to read this. I already gave it to you guys. I just have a problem with the TIF, don't I? Because I have a problem with Dave Landis, don't I? You know I have a problem with Dave Landis? He put his hands on me in his office. Can't do that in a public, in a public building. You can't even do it outside a public building. Here's what this says. "For Gordon Winter, opinion page editor, Lincoln Journal Star, Lincoln, Nebraska, written Friday, August 22nd, 2014, hand-delivered and notarized copy to Lincoln Journal Star Building, Monday, 8/25/2014. Thank you for your recent articles on the information on the TIF. The creative writing article was very interesting, the one where Dave Landis, Director of Lincoln, Nebraska Urban Development Department, and the lady senator were changing up the rules for TIF. Something about this TIF creative writing just doesn't smell right. My brothers and I read this article together and we have some questions. Number one, when we were coming up, growing up, and you guys know I'm not from here, right? I'm from Denver, Colorado. We think things different. When we were coming up, creative was another word for backdoor deal and meeting in a shady alley. Number two, who decides when the TIF rules, who decides when the TIF rules can be creative? Number three, do all the broken-down neighborhoods get a fair chance at the creative TIF? Number four, is the word tiff just another word for stealing? Thank you for your time, Terry Pope Gonzalez, founder of Salt Creek Neighborhood Association in memory of Joe and Scout Gonzalez. And we always put Psalms 91, that reminds me to behave. Now, I don't always behave. We know it. I don't know where your school is. You'll have to tell me. Southwest, east, something.
Southeast.
Yeah, I don't know where that is.
It's about 37th and Van Dorn.
Okay. I know where Lincoln High is because my husband graduated there in 1961. My father-in-law did in 1942. Now, I'm not from here, so I don't know where your stuff is. So this is for the record. Now, see this? This is notarized certified. It even says it's notarized certified that it's a copy. So go listen here, sweetheart. Thank you. Thank you for your time. Because, see, I'm one of the areas that you guys blighted and did nothing with, remember?
All right. Anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Okay, next item, please.
Item 19, approving a contract between the City of Lincoln and First Star Recycling for recycling processing services pursuant to bid number 16-080, beginning June 1st, 2016 through May 31st, 2020, with the option to renew for additional two, excuse me, with the option to renew for two additional one-year terms.
I work as recycling coordinator for the City of Lincoln and would like to answer any questions you may have regarding this contract.
Any questions on the contract? Jane?
The contract is for all of the sites that Lincoln offers for recycling for the pickup and removal of all the different recyclables, right?
Yes, we have a separate contract for the collection and this is delivering the recyclables to the processing facilities that sorts, bales, and markets the material.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Please come forward. Okay, next item, please.
Item 20, amending the funding shown of CIP Project Fire Station 11 by changing and increasing the appropriation from $1,676,000 to $2,500,000 and authorizing the finance director to increase appropriations for and approve expenditure of $2,500,000.
Steve Hupke, finance director. This is just simply getting the capital improvement program appropriation in line with the amount of money that's in the COPs ordinance that's before you on third reading today.
All right. Questions for Steve? Larian.
If, when this fire station receives its final design package and it comes, if it comes in lower than 2.5 million, will you come back before us to reduce this appropriation or this amount in the CIP?
It'd just be, we probably wouldn't come back to reduce the appropriation. It'd just be unspent appropriations. Can't be used for anything else unless we come before council and propose to move it somewhere and utilize it.
So if it isn't all spent on this, you'd come back before council?
Before anything else was done with it. And since the source of funding is the COPs funding, the money that was issued or the proceeds that we received cannot be used for anything besides the fire station.
John?
And I think with the amendment I'm going to propose in a moment, under the COPs ordinance, the certificates of participation, that if those come in less or we authorize up to 2.5 million in that, anything less would then go to another category like streetlights in there. So that self-adjusts if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. We have Mike Rogers, bond counsel here to address any issues that come up along with that.
Okay, thank you.
I guess I was trying to clarify John's question too, that for the items that we are approving for the COPs financing, that funding can be shifted to other items as long as they don't exceed the allocated amount, correct? So up to 2.5 million?
Better have Mike answer that one.
Good afternoon, Mike Rogers, Gilmore and Bell Bond Counsel. Yes, the way financing ordinance is, whether it's a certificates of participation financing or a bond ordinance work is, and the way the original ordinance that was drafted, it allowed for spending the proceeds on the projects listed. And there weren't caps on each individual project. The amendment that I saw being proposed would put caps on specific projects, but the phrasing would allow any excess to shift down to the bottom and go into the streetlight, streetlight fund. That's the draft amendment that I've, that I've seen. But normally, yes, the funds can flow among projects because typically when financing comes before council, bids aren't in and you don't know exactly how much each particular item's going to cost. And locking in a specific amounts in an ordinance is a challenge early in that process because you've, you don't have, you limit your flexibility then in the future.
So I know that we're going to be talking about the amendment, but if the language in the amendment says any unspent funds go directly towards the streetlights, what happens if, say, the fire station is, doesn't come in at 2.5 million, it's actually 2.6 million and, say, the Experian Roof Building comes in lower, we can't use that excess funding of $100,000 to go towards, right, the fire station? We're restricted to have it only go towards the streetlights?
Under my proposal, that's correct.
But in, it's normal and customary when we go out for the certificates or when we go out for bond finding, funding to have that flexibility to shift the funds as needed just so long as they are restricted to those programs or projects that are listed on our approval.
That's, that's correct. That's more customarily how it's been done.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Please come forward. Okay, next item, please.
Item 21, approving the purchase of various turf equipment in the amount of $527,856 for the city golf courses from Midwest Turf and Irrigation with financing provided by U.S. Bancorp as provided in bill number 16-37.
Good afternoon, Lynn Johnson with Lincoln Parks and Recreation. Two weeks ago, there was a public hearing on the lease purchase financing for this equipment. And we delayed action, requested delay of action on this so that we could bring the actual agreement to you for approval for purchase of the equipment. Just by way of reminder, this is 21 pieces of golf maintenance equipment. This is for maintenance of homes and Mahoney Golf Courses. And the, the amount of the equipment, the amount of the purchase of the equipment is just over a half million dollars. And the funding for this comes out of our regular maintenance budget for the golf program. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for Lynn? All right. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Please come forward. All right, we'll move on to the next item. And if you would, could we leave, could we read all three of the items under public hearing ordinance second reading into the record so Doug can just come up once, given we have severe weather going on?
Yes.
People probably want to make sure their house is all right?
Item 22, amending the pay schedule for the employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range which is prefixed by the letter C by creating the classification of GIS technician. Item 23, amending the pay schedule for the employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay range prefixed by the letter N to delete the classifications Library Assistant 1 and Library Assistant 2. Item 24, amending the pay schedule for the employee group whose classifications are assigned to the pay ranges prefixed by the letters A and C to delete the classifications of Library Assistant 3, Library Systems Coordinator, Library 1, Librarian 1, 2, 3, and 4, and Library Supervisor 1, 2, 3, and 4.
Good afternoon, counsel. Doug McDaniel, Human Resources. Item 22, we are seeking to create a new classification called a GIS technician. As I said, a new classification being developed to more accurately reflect the duties and provide for better hiring into the discipline of GIS to avoid using other non-related classifications. The pay range that we've calculated is a C25 based on comparability. And that range for the record is $44,112.64 to $56,328.48.
All right. Questions on the GIS technician? All right.
Item 23 and 24 are merely cleanup to delete unused classifications.
Questions on the second one? All right.
What are we doing with all our library assistants?
They're all in place. We had reorganized several years ago. These were older classifications that just stood on the books. So nothing's being done with them. They're all, they're all in place.
I want to make sure we're not emptying the libraries of all the personnel.
Not at all.
It stood on the books, you're saying.
That was unintended, but thank you, Carl.
He'll be here all night.
I hope.
The third one. The third one. Oh, did you cover both of them?
Same thing for that.
All righty. I'm way behind.
What is driving the changes currently?
It is purely cleanup. The changes were made probably five, six years ago, and these are just old classifications that are still on the records.
Are there implications for budget in the future?
None.
Okay.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All right, thank you, Doug. Anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Please come forward. All right, move on to the next item, please.
That ends our public hearing portion on the agenda.
All right, let's move into the voting session and go, since we delayed one week, item 16 and 17. Let's go to item 18.
Item 18, declaring the South University Place redevelopment area, which consists of approximately 37 acres of land, generally bounded by Holdridge Street, Francis Street, and 48th Street to 49th Street, including Uni Place Park to the north as blighted and substandard.
Introduced by?
Introduced by Carl Eskridge.
So moved.
Second by John, discussion. Cindy?
I would like to say that I have attended a meeting and there are people very excited about this, the redevelopment that's going in there. I've also spoken to the owner of the property, Tasty's, who's let me know that, and QP, who's let me know that the signs may be incorporated in some fashion into the new project. We don't know how yet, but I found that very reassuring. And he, he did also. He said at least some of his legacy will live on.
All right, any other comments? The sign's not the recipe. Okay. All right. Call the roll on item 18, please.
Gaylord Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rabel.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, on item 19.
19, approving a contract between the City of Lincoln and First Star Recycling for recycling processes, processing services pursuant to bid number 16-080, beginning June 1st, 2016 through May 21st, 2020. beginning June first, two thousand and sixteen, through May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty, with the option to renew for additional one-year terms. Uh, introduced by Carl.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Jane, discussion? All right, call the roll, please.
Gaylord Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christiansen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven, zero.
All right, move on to item twenty.
Item twenty, amending the funding shown on CIP Project Fire Station eleven by changing and increasing the appropriation from one million six hundred and seventy-six thousand to two million five hundred thousand, and authorizing the finance director to increase appropriations for and approve expenditure of two million five hundred thousand. Introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Jane, discussion? Okay, call the roll, please.
Gaylord Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christiansen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven, zero.
Item twenty-one, please.
Approving the purchase of various turf equipment in the amount of five hundred twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars for the city golf courses from Midwest Turf and Irrigation, with financing provided by U.S. Bancorp as provided in bill number one-six dash three-seven. Introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by John, discussion? All right, call the roll, please.
Gaylord Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christiansen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven, zero.
All right, let's move on to ordinances, third reading, item twenty-five.
I actually have a motion to amend on item twenty-five.
Okay. Do we have copies of it here?
Mm-hmm.
Probably move the main motion and then move to adopt.
Okay. All right, uh, let's, do we have, who's our introducer?
Uh, introduced by Christiansen.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Carl. All right, now we have the floor open for an amendment.
Why don't we make motion amend number one?
You don't have copies of it, do you?
Yeah, do we have a copy of it?
And who's introducing it?
What does it say?
It's a substitute.
This was a, yes, this was a motion to amend number one for replacing the, um, ordinance introduced on the eighteenth with the substitute ordinance.
Yeah, just a quick.
Can we see a copy?
Associated schedules and agreements, it was.
I must have missed it in the packet.
It was in the packet, just a simple little three-page thing.
Be great if those could be listed online, um, in the future.
I think our Bond Counsel's coming up to talk to us.
Might be able to explain what happened. Um, the original ordinance provided for a master lease purchase agreement and a schedule number one to be attached to that master lease purchase agreement. The documents we actually received from U.S. Banc recognized that we are operating under the original master lease purchase agreement entered into in, um, I don't remember, I don't have it in front of me, it was, uh, two thousand and thirteen, I believe, and so this is property schedule number two. So, it's just, it was just a shifting in the, the documents are the same as what we had in two thousand and thirteen, so this was just a recognition of that, and, uh, a reflection of, uh, of that change in documentation for the transaction.
Can I just ask when it was submitted to the clerk's office? Do you know?
Uh, on what date, what day?
How recently?
Uh, it would have been, uh, last Thursday, I believe, I don't.
We had it before last week, because I, I had it last Monday.
Okay.
The week before, Thursday before.
Probably was, that's right, it would have been the Thursday before, I'm sorry, my internal calendar is off, but, uh, that's, that's.
Have we moved the motion?
Right.
I did.
Okay.
I don't know if it was second, though.
Second for the amendment?
Oh, yeah. Seconded by Jane on the motion. Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, call the roll on the motion to amend.
Gaylord Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christiansen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
On the main motion.
And then on the main motion, sorry, I'm looking at our people moving around, thinking that there's severe weather coming our way.
Gaylord Baird.
We, yeah, we got it.
Um, all right, uh, on the main motion.
Gaylord Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christiansen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven, zero.
All right, move on to item twenty-six, please.
Annexation one-six-zero-zero-five, amending the Lincoln Corporate Limits map by annexing approximately twenty-two-point-three-six acres of property generally located at West Silverado Court and Highway thirty-four. Introduced by Christiansen.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Carl, discussion. Carl?
Yeah, this is just the addition to a small subdivision, just to the west of Fallbrook. It's, um, it's a great addition of housing, which we need greatly in our community. Uh, the only concern that we heard, uh, through the processes here was some concern by a very responsible business, Kawasaki, about possible paint fumes. Uh, there is no significant objection to that, so it's, uh, it sounds like a great addition.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, call the roll, please.
Gaylord Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christiansen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven, zero. Twenty-seven, change of zone one-six-zero-one-three, application of Star Road, Skell Lewis and LLC for a change of zone from AG Agriculture District to R-three Residential District on property generally located at West Silverado Court and Highway thirty-four. Introduced by Christiansen.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Carl, discussion? Call the roll.
Gaylord Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christiansen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, and item twenty-eight.
Ordinance authorizing the city to enter into a lease purchase transaction in a principal amount not to exceed nine million six hundred and fifty thousand to purchase and install light poles and related equipment for the lighting of streets, fire apparatus, arterial, aerial trucks, and new fire engines, a fire station to replace the city's existing fire station number eleven, which is currently located on land provided by the Lincoln Airport Authority, and a new roof and HVAC system for the city's municipal services center located at nine-oh-one and nine-forty-nine West Bond Street and related matters. Introduced by Christiansen.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Carl. John?
And, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move motion to amend number one.
Second. Seconded by Roy. John, would you give us a breakdown?
Yes, as it is drafted now, uh, it basically inserts a couple paragraphs, and the effect is that instead of nine million six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it would replace that figure with eight hundred thousand less, leaving it under the certificates of participation at eight million eight hundred and fifty thousand, and then there'd be a section inserted that authorized the following expenditures out of the certificates of participation, what we also nicknamed COPs, uh, up to, in the first category, up to two-and-a-half million to build the fire station on Fire Station eleven. Number two, up to two million eight hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred and forty dollars to purchase the fire apparatus, aerial trucks, and new fire engines, and that would be two aerial trucks and three new engines. Third category'd be up to two million one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a new roof and HVA systems at the Experian Building, also called the Municipal Services Center. And four, the remainder of the proceeds under the certificates of participation would go toward the purchase and installation of light poles, uh, and related equipment for lighting of streets. So, that's what I had. Now, in some meetings we had this morning, uh, part of this, too, the reason I made these changes is last, uh, September, whatever, last fall, we had had a resolution that authorized up to nine million four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be spent, and I feel that we have a commitment to do that, but during the hearings and discussion, it came out that, uh, there was going to be fiber optics that had originally been included with these four categories of six hundred thousand, that would be internally financed, and part of the reason was to, um, and this, because some of that fiber optics would go to a private entity, it might taint the whole certificate of participation into taxable interest, which would raise our interest rate. So, since they're looking at doing it internally, since, uh, I took that six hundred thousand out of the nine-six-fifty, um, and so, and then the other, there was two hundred thousand that, um, well, see, I went, I went back to the, the normal nine million four hundred and fifty thousand, I took that six hundred thousand out, so that gets to the eight million eight hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, so the fiber would come out of internal financing. We finance all the other categories here. The other element that came up in some discussions earlier today, uh, it had been stated in the prior, the main, uh, uh, ordinance, that there was going to be two million for fire station, I'm sorry, two million for these fire apparatus, uh, and that the other eight hundred and thirty-six thousand five forty would be paid for out of, uh, two hundred thousand of savings we had on some labor negotiations, and then another six hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred and forty out of the property valuation that was, we experienced more revenue. Uh, today, I saw the motion, we had made that reallocation of two hundred thousand, so I would agree to modify this. As far as the other six hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred and forty, um, it's just our reallocation set out of the general fund, and my understanding, I think that of my colleagues, was that was not reallocating that excess revenue, that was just to come out of the general fund as found, because I want to protect that six hundred and thirty-six thousand, whatever, or whatever it was, from the property valuation. So, uh, with that two hundred thousand in mind, um, I'd, um, I guess I'd be willing, if I'm getting this right, go to nine million fifty thousand dollars, but, um, so I'd be willing, questions, because I know.
Jane?
Uh, I would like Steve Hupka to come up, and I have some questions for him.
Okay. And before we go on to questions, I've been talking to Conan, he's our Sergeant-at-Arms. Uh, the storm is at mostly eighty-fourth and Highway Two. If, um, it's moving northeast, he's in touch with dispatch, who's giving us updates, that is why we're hearing this, we haven't moved, and you're hearing the sirens, but, um, in the event that something does happen here, uh, he will give us a notification, and we will go to the bathrooms, uh, across, the public will go to the bathrooms across the street, uh, we will go to the bathrooms.
Across the hall.
Across the hall, sorry. Uh, and we will go to the bathrooms that are in our city council office, but just to know what the procedure is, um, but, uh, there's no immediate threat for this area right now.
Would that really be good, just to adjourn, and then pick this up next week and delay it with the weather activity?
If you're okay with that, John?
I would, no, I don't mind, I, I think if we, I think that might be the prudent thing, so that people have to travel somewhere, I mean, safety is more important, and this is the only remaining.
So, are you suggesting we move adjournment?
I would, I would so move.
What's, uh?
Well, we have to delay this till next week, and then.
Is that, okay, what's, if you're fine with that, that's what we're gonna do, um, if folks need to shelter here, um, they can do so, um, and we'll move forward from that. Uh, John, would you like to move a delay?
I, I, I guess first, I'm, I'd just move for adjournment, and that we would continue this public hearing, or this.
What about the open mic? You're gonna adjourn that for next week, too?
We'd continue that for next week, too, I think that's only appropriate.
Because, see, we're not dying, because I'm not dying with any of you, so there's